The board, please. They have the motion to approve the regular meeting, please.
How move it?
Moved by the law.
Seconded.
Seconded by Phil Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Remains standing on its island. My talk today.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. And to the Republic for which he stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and everlasting.
Thank you. I have the motion to approve the board agenda, please.
I'll move it.
Moved by Jeffrey Laig.
Awesome.
Seconded by Judy Yamato. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Our first item this evening is a presentation by Boses Capital Project.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Carrie Stroka. I'm the Assistant Superintendent at Orange County Straboses. And I'd just like to introduce a few people that I brought along with me this evening as part of this Capital Project team. So we have joining us one of our cooperative board members, Michael Bello, who is probably pretty familiar to you. Deborah Hepes is with me as well, the Deputy Superintendent for Orange County Straboses. I have Pete Polarski is with us, who is helping with technology this evening. He's part of our Technology Division. Russ Davidson from KG&amp;D Architects. And I also have Jason Schwartz and Sarah Bradshaw, who are here from BPD. They are our municipal finance advisors, actually as well as yours. So that's the team that's with us this evening. And we're looking forward to having the opportunity to present this project to you. So a capital project went done by a Boses is done differently in terms of its initial stages than a capital project that is done in a component school district. And the largest difference is the way that it's funded. As I'm sure you're aware, Boses isn't taxing. We don't levy taxes. We don't receive state aid. We are actually your partner and we function in conjunction with you to provide for our collaborative students. So when we need to do a capital project, we have to come to the boards first to discuss the financing because that is a collaborative effort as well. Because we do not have the authority to finance the way that a school district has the authority to finance. So I'll give you a little history of the timeline of the project. So we had a building condition survey done in 2020, just like you would have a building condition survey done. And our board spent an incredible amount of time reviewing that building condition survey with our department, our division of operations, as well as our architects, to look and see the areas that really needed to be addressed. And there were really significant infrastructure areas that needed to be addressed. And our board decided it was time to take on a capital project. The last time we did a bonded capital project was in the eighties. So it's been some time. It was on the buildings on Gibson Road that were built in the early seventies. So as part of the capital project, we had a facility advisory committee that had members of the community from the boards and the central administration. Mr. Riedel sat on that committee and we were very thankful for his input and support throughout that process. So that committee met monthly since January. And we also put together focus groups from staff and stakeholders within the district to look and have their input on the project, as well as having visitations by district boards and administrative teams to come and take tours. And those will continue on into the future. So anytime anyone wants to come visit, we welcome you. And finally, here we are in August. We have spent the better part of August visiting each of our component school district boards to present this part of the project. And again, mine is a very 30,000 feet broad overview of what the project is because again, the real important part of this evening is to discuss with you the financing. And Jason will come up and do that so that you understand that the intermunicipal agreement, which he will discuss with you. And finally, in October, on October 25th, there will be a vote. And so the taxpayers in all of the Boses communities will vote on this project and a determination will be made as to whether or not the capital project goes forward. So the board does not vote on the project, but instead the community does. And as a community member, you have the opportunity to vote as well. So the project cost is $159 million. We have over 600,000 square feet of buildings at Orange County Straboses, which is the equivalent of three to four typical high schools. So we have expansive amount of facilities. The majority of this project, as you'll see on Gibson Road, between the Special Education Center and the Career Technical Education Center, 80% of the project is focused on that campus because that is the most aged campus and what needs the greatest amount of work. And 80% of the project is focused on infrastructure. The piece that is focused at Arden Hill, which used to be the old Arden Hill Hospital, that's now a school, that part is to actually finish the initial phase of the Arden Hill structure. And I'll explain a little bit about what is going to be done there. And at this point, the estimated aidable portion of the project is 72%. And then Jason will be able to speak to you a little bit about how that impacts the aid that you'll receive back because you would receive that directly. I've already explained why we're doing it. So we're going to jump in here to the summary of the major infrastructure work. This is not the entirety of the work. These are some points of some high cost items so that to bring your attention to what we're talking about doing here. So $14 million of this project is in roofs. And then we have a large number that's in window replacements, doors, glazing, and electric upgrades because it's original electric in those buildings as well as original roofs. So the time has come to address those issues. And finally, you'll see a point here where we stated that we're looking at secured entrances, which are really secured vestibules, which most schools have added to the buildings where you have one door that you enter and you're checked, you know, visitor to scan in before they are actually able to enter the building with the students. So on our Gibson Road campus, we do not have secured vestibules while the buildings are secured because all the doors are locked. There are some components of this project that are program related improvements. So as you can imagine, the career and technical demands that our graduating students need to enter the workforce has changed a little since the seventies when those buildings were originally built and those programs were originally created there. And obviously, the teachers have changed the programming, but the actual structure of the building itself has not changed to go along with it. So one of the things that we will be adding is 27 additional classrooms. 27 additional classrooms, which at this point, from our projections, will be predominantly taken over by career technical education students. We have 300 more students that will start in September than did last year. And that is 300 more than started the year before. So in the past two years, the enrollment in that particular division has increased by 600 students. And any of us who are looking at the paper and looking for who's looking for employees, they're looking in some of the trades that are very popular with our students. Electrical, welding, heavy equipment, and any of the health career fields. So we're excited to be able to continue to put those individuals out into the job market. We also would be building a gymnasium at the Arden Hill site. That gymnasium has always been in the initial master plan to build there. There is not a gymnasium at the Arden Hill School right now. This will just use a classroom that's been kind of turned into a fitness room. So that gymnasium would be accessible for our students during the day and then be accessible for outside use after the school hours and on the weekends. And the final piece that I wanted to summarize tonight is Building One. So for those of us who have lived in Orange County our whole lives, Building One used to be Medical Arts One. So Medical Arts One is a wooden two-story structure that we would be looking to renovate into office space. It's not suitable for students. But what that would do is take people who are in office spaces that could be used as classrooms and move them into that building. So it would free up additional classrooms for student use. So while I'm not expecting anyone to be able to read any of the words that is on this picture here, I think it's important to just keep an eye on the purple areas. And I'm going to ask Russ, the architect, if, Russ, you want to explain a little bit about why there is so much purple flooding these pictures and what that entails?
Well, again, we don't want you to read. We know you can't read it. The real point is that these are very comprehensive renovations. So everything in purple means it's getting addressed. New classroom storage. It is a complete renovation of Boses facilities. So you'll see on the next few slides, lots of purple and lots of blue. The blue section is actually the new secured entrance. And there is some administrative space there because that needs to come out by the front entrance. This is the upper and lower floors also, lots of purple. It's getting a comprehensive renovation of the axle rod building again, which was originally built in 1969 and is pretty original. The C-Tech building, you'll also see a lot of purple and you'll see this large blue sort of rounded off rectangle in the upper left corner. That is a building addition, but it's replacing what's called the 400 building. And if you haven't been to the campus, you should come take Carrie's tour of the 400 building. The 400 building is a metal storage building that had been converted to classrooms. And although it's gotten by over the years, it's got a lot of code issues and it makes no sense to put any more money into a metal storage building. So this proposes to build a classroom addition, a legit classroom addition for your higher technology spaces that are in high demand like advanced electrical, TV studio, aeronautics, and a multipurpose area for the law enforcement program. So this will be state of the art, career and tech. But also, very importantly, is you'll see that it sort of connects to the existing building and you'll see this light purple stripe through the other building. Right now, that entire back area has no connection to the main building. So all students have to go outdoors and go into classrooms directly from outside doors. And of course, that's not a good thing from a security point of view. So it's to connect the building and to improve security. And overall, the work that's being proposed at Gibson Road is predominantly because things have reached the end of their expected useful life. Some of them by a factor of two. So it doesn't owe Boses anything. It's been really well maintained. It's just time to do a more comprehensive replacement.
This is an aerial photo of the Arden Hill campus and the former Arden Hill Hospital, which is now a school. And you'll see there are yellow boxes. I discussed the far one on the right, which is Old Medical Arts One. That is the Building One that would be renovated to house offices to make space for students in a different location. The two other yellow boxes, that's actually where we're going to be able to create 27 new classrooms. That's the old north wing of the hospital, which hasn't been touched, as well as the third floor of the school building itself. So that would create significant new rooms that would allow for us to continue to accept the larger enrollment that we're seeing in the trajectory for CTE as well as special education. And finally, at the top of the photo, you'll see the blue square. That's the new gymnasium. It's attached to the building itself, but there is parking near it at an outdoor practice field. So it would be accessible to outside groups that might want to use it. Our gyms are booked on the Gibson campus constantly because obviously, there are not enough gymnasiums in all the school buildings in the community. So we're happy to have those community groups come in and use these as well. And it would also be available for any sports contests any of the schools might have after school. That was our intention, to make that accessible and usable by everyone. This is just some drawings to show you the gymnasium on the left and then obviously, how we're creating the classrooms in the north wing, which is a two-story structure, as well as the rectangle that shows you the third floor of Arden Hill. Again, all of these are conceptual at this point while we move forward in this pre-bond process. So finally, I just want to bring your attention to some site work that has to be done so that Gibson Road campus does not get municipal services. We have a leach field and we have well water. And both of those systems are in need of assistance. So we have here into the project built monies to rectify the leach field situ issues as well as the well water system. Our first goal would be to do site work to allow us to tap into some close by municipal services. But we need to negotiate that with the municipalities. But our second solution would obviously be to continue to be able to manage that on site and we would do so. And then finally, there's paving, which comes along with any capital project, as you all know. So as I said at the beginning, this is just the first phase of us sharing the actual specifics of the project. Going forward, we will be putting together materials that will be shared with all of the taxpayers of the community, as well as all the taxpayers of the community that will vote throughout the Boses Supervisory District. We'll have materials in print as well as on websites. We're doing a video and we'll have social media information as well. But tonight's presentation, I'm going to have Jason come up and join me from Bernard P. Donegan, who's really going to speak to you about what the board has to vote on, right? So again, which has to do with if the project is to pass at the end of October, how is the district interested in financing the project? And again, would only be a concern if the project passes through the taxpayers and the voters at the end of October. So does anybody have any questions for my part before Jason comes on? Happy to answer them. No? Okay. You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. It's Carrie, as I said, my name is Jason Schwartz from Donington Incorporated. We work with both the Boses and here at Port Jervis as your financial advisors. With me tonight is my colleague Sarah Bradshaw. So we have the report up on the screen and Sarah's also handing out hard copies. As Carrie mentioned, really, our purpose here tonight is to talk to you about the options available for financing a Boses project because they're quite different than how you would finance your own local projects. So we're going to do a little bit of a high level summary of what those differences are and then go through a couple of specific financial scenarios that could apply for you here at Port Jervis. So to start, I'm talking about, you know, what are the options for Boses to finance a project? So really, there's two ways that can be done. What we call an IMA or an intermunicipal agreement. Or if that, if we don't go that route, the other option is to issue debt through DASNY. I think an important thing to say off the top is really, in our experience, what we see with most Boses projects is they do tend to go the IMA route. I think you'll see as we go through the presentation why that is, some of the benefits of that method. But we'll go through just, you know, all the specifics so you have all the background. So first of all, as we've already covered, either way, whichever route we go, there is going to be a Boses-wide public referendum. So ultimately, it will be up to the public to approve the project. So we're not asking you as a board to approve the project. We're really just here tonight to talk about, do you want to approve an IMA and have that option for financing? Or if not, then we'll have to go the DASNY route. And we'll talk in a minute about why we have to have that decision upfront in terms of project cost. The differences between the two options are, under the IMA, that's basically an agreement between the Boses and each of the 17 components. And we have to have all 17 components sign off on that in order to have that as an option. If any one component says no, that's off the table and we have to go DASNY. The Boses Board has already approved that IMA, so that's a live document. And we're really asking everybody to consider signing that between now and mid-September so that we know what our final project costs are for that public referendum in October. Under the IMA agreement, if we go that route, each district would have a specific payment schedule to the Boses and we'll go through the specifics in a minute. That's all laid out in the IMA. And then it would really be up to you at a local level to decide how you want to pay that. You can just pay cash or you can issue roll notes for a few years, issue bonds, and we'll look at some scenarios for that. But really, the key is you have the flexibility to choose the payment structure that works for you, whether that's cash or bonds. Under the DASNY option, the Boses would be issuing the financing and there would just be one common payback schedule for all components. So you would have no say over what that is. There would just be one schedule and you'll have to pay your pro-rata share of that should the public pass the vote. So that's one key difference is you lose a little bit of the flexibility. As far as some of the other, you know, pros and cons of going IMA versus DASNY, one of the big ones that we were talking about a minute ago is that Boses-wide referendum, what is that number going to be? So as Carrie said earlier, if we're just talking the basic scope, all those items that the Boses intends to do, that's $159.8 million. If we don't approve the IMA and we have to go DASNY, then the referendum is actually going to be $165.5 million because we have to add on 5.7 million of cost of issuance to go through the dormance. It's quite costly, especially on a project of this size. Out of that 5.7 million, you specifically here in Port Jervis, that would be about 300,000 additional costs for you as your share of that cost of issuance. Another key difference is a DASNY bond is a revenue bond, not a general obligation bond like you issue here at Port Jervis when you're doing your own projects. So that's considered a slightly riskier investment. So usually, it has a higher interest rate, maybe 40 to 50 basis points higher. So on a project of this size, if we assume a 20-year bond, that would be about $23 million in additional interest expense. And your share here locally of that would be about 1.2 million. So in total, between cost of issuance and interest expense, about 1.5 million in extra costs you have to pick up if we go the DASNY route. Another key difference is back on the IMA side, we talked about that flexibility. The reason that that's important is because with a Boses project, it's a little different than your own projects. You're probably familiar that on your local projects, the aid comes back traditionally over about 15 years. With a Boses project, we have the flexibility where the aid comes back based on our payment schedule. So on your own projects, 15 years regardless of how you pay it back. On a Boses project, if we pay it back all in cash, we get the aid back the same year we're making the payments. If we issue a bond for 10 years, 10-year payback, 20 years, 20-year payback, it all matches up. So we have a lot more options available to us to shorten the payback if we want to or extend it and still have a nice smooth local share between our debt and our building aid. So those are kind of some of the key differences. I'll pause there for a minute. Any questions on that before we get into some of the specific numbers for your share of the project? Okay? So the rest of the presentation is really assuming that if we were all to approve the IMA, what does that look like as an option? So first of all, to start, we have basically, how do we determine your share of the project? So as you said, the total project is $159 million and we break that down based on the ARWADA, the Resident Weighted Average Daily Attendance. So that is a state figure to determine more or less the size of the districts and make sure that everybody's paying kind of their share based on their size. So for you here at Port Jervis, that's just over 5% of the Boses ARWADA. So your share of the project would be about 8.2 million out of the 159 million. And then how do we pay that back to the Boses? So we've worked with the Boses and their architect to come up with a cash flow projection for when they'll need dollars based on their anticipated construction schedule. And again, you'll pay your share of that. So basically, what that would look like if the IMA were to be approved and the public were to pass the vote is, starting in July of '23, you would make a $4.2 million payment to the Boses. The following July, a $3.3 million payment. And then that final July of '25, as the construction starts to wrap up, you have about a $600,000 payment to the Boses. So again, as we were saying earlier, those are the specific payments you're going to make to the Boses. But then you would have the option to either pay cash for those or issue financings if you want a different payback schedule that works better for the district. So really, the rest of the report is just a couple of samples of what that could look like. So the first scenario would be, what if we want to pay cash? So you'll see going across the bottom of the page there in the green boxes are all the cash payments that we just discussed. And the purple boxes would be the aid coming back the same year. So that aid to offset your cash payment. So on the maturity schedule here, you see we're paying cash on the left-hand side, no debt. So that's nice, no additional cost for cost of issuance or interest expense. We get our aid back and then our local share in that bottom right-hand corner for the total project is about 3.6 million. Another scenario that we could look at is one where we roll notes. So this is a good example for a district that thinks they may be able to pay their local share in cash, but you just don't have all that money upfront in July to pay it. So you issue a note right before the payments due to make that payment to Boses. And then when the aid comes back at the end of the year, you can use that money plus your local share to pay down the project. So that's nice, you know, when we flip to the maturity schedule here. Now we've moved over to some debt service options. And we do have a little bit of interest expense from rolling the notes, but not a lot of extra costs since we're just doing short-term financing. So that bottom right-hand corner, again, the local share is a little bit higher, but not too different than the cash option. And then finally, we have an option to show, what if you wanted to really stretch this out? What if those payments are too big for you to make upfront? So this would be a long-term financing option. So you roll notes for a few years and then issue the bond in the blue box there. And on the maturity schedule here, you can see now we're really stretching that payment out. So that local share on the right-hand side in column F is much lower on an annual basis. But overall, in that bottom right-hand corner, it's much higher on a total basis because we're deferring principal payments and paying interest over 20 years. So again, having the IMA gives you some flexibility for, you know, what of those scenarios works best for you as opposed to if we go the DASNY route, you know, it may look like this last scenario and there's really no flexibility to pay it down faster and save some of that interest expense. So, you know, those are just a couple of different scenarios. And again, these, you can do any combination of these. If you wanted to pay cash one year, finance the second year, that's available as well. But really, the key is you have the flexibility to decide what works best for you if everybody's to approve the IMA. So I, there's kind of a lot of information, went through it quickly there, just to kind of give you a high level overview. Any questions on any of the specific numbers or on the different options available? That's really all we had then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason and Team Boses for a great presentation. I just don't want the presenters to misinterpret the lack of questions for apathy. This board has been very in tune with this as it developed and they did receive the presentation in advance so they had an opportunity to take a look at that. And really, what you did was just connected some dots that may have existed. So I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't misinterpreted, that the lack of question wasn't a lack of interest. It's quite the opposite.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Riedel, we want to thank you for participating in our committee throughout the past several months and helping us get to this point.
No, it was an absolute pleasure and really, anything for Boses. The fact that you mentioned the enrollment going up remarkably over two years is not at all a surprise. And it's because of you continue to look at your programs, improve your programs, expand on them in just an innovative way, so.
And he said it's a pretty incredible student, so thank you.
That we will accept this as an affirmative statement. But I speak for the board. Those sitting around this table are very big supporters of what you offer, both in the special education realm and also in the career tech realm.
Thank you very much.
So appreciate your time and all the.
It was nice to see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is public comment. We have no one signed up for public comment. Okay, administrative report, superintendent, Mike Riedel.
Guess I should use help, Mike. So yeah, I'll be relatively brief. Since March of 2020, I was unfortunately, the voice of relaying COVID-19 updates. Whenever new guidance came out, it was, you know, the phone call that we would send out that information. And I thought it was kind of appropriate that this is actually my last board meeting as superintendent of schools for this amazing school district. But new guidance was released yesterday. So I figured I would take the opportunity to just give one last update regarding what was released from the New York State Department of Health as well as the Education Department regarding the 2022-23 school year and the COVID guidance for that. So and more so, it's also kind of exciting because it's really the first one that I'm able to deliver that I actually think will be well received by folks and not viewed as bad news or otherwise. So here are a few of the highlights. Students and staff exposed to COVID, in other words, close contacts, will not be required to quarantine. So you will be able to continue to report to work and/or school. That really connects to the next bullet, which is the test to stay will end. Students will no longer be required to receive a COVID test if exposed to an infected person in order to remain in school. And students and staff who test positive for COVID-19 should isolate for five days. And those with symptoms may actually continue to attend school after those five days if they are fever-free without fever-reducing medicine for 24 hours and their symptoms are improving. And they wear masks through day 10. So that goes right in hand with the next bullet, which is, you know, universal masking is clearly not required. And if those are the reasons why you need that. Here's another one that will impact Ms. Lopez and my lives because of the work that goes into the testing. Schools are not required to test on vaccinated staff. And schools are also not required to do the daily reports to the Department of Health for COVID. And schools will not be required to contact tracing. So there's a lot, lot going on there, but I felt that it was kind of a nice way to kind of end all of the messages that I gave for COVID-19 for things that just kind of indicate progress. indicate progress and movement in a positive direction in this very unique time that we're all living through with COVID-19. And I'll close with that it's been an absolute pleasure to be a member of the Port Jervis team for the past five years. Five years ago, Board of Education took a risk on me and said, welcome to central administration, and I'm forever grateful for that, for that opportunity, and I've obtained to work with really just an amazing group of administrators on a day-to-day basis as well as an incredible faculty and staff. So with that, thank you.
Next is Assistant Superintendent for Construction, Dr. Natasha Block.
First, I want to thank our summer school teachers and principals for another unbelievable summer school program. We have one more summer school presentation not tonight, which is our college science course, which we'll be presenting in September as they're completing their final presentation for their portion requirement. We also have nine high school graduates this summer, so congratulations to our summer school graduates who completed this wonderful milestone. Not standing, each of our four buildings are planning for the return of students this fall. Communication went out via phone messaging and social media. With that being said, the orientation and open house dates are for HBE. PK kindergarten orientation is August 25th at 6:00 p.m. For ASK, our kindergarten orientation is August 30th at 5:30 p.m. And I forgot our open house for HBE, it's, sorry, I must have over it. It is September 27th and 28th at 7:00 p.m. And that's grades one through three, one through two, and five through six. And ASK, our kindergarten orientation is August 30th at 5:30 p.m. Our open house, September 14th, 7:00 p.m. for grades one to three, and September 15th at 7:00 p.m. for grades four to six. Our middle school orientation, which we're doing this year, is August 29th for seventh graders at 5:00 p.m. and eighth grade at 6:30 p.m. And another orientation encore presentation for August 30th, which would be a combined seventh and eighth grade at 1:00 p.m. if you're not able to make it to the 29th or for the 29th orientation date. We also have our open house September 21st at 7:00 p.m. Freshman orientation for the high school is August 25th at 9:00 a.m., and open house is September 22nd at 7:00 p.m. We're going to pivot and dial it back in with a quick reminder for our teachers and staff, our new teacher orientation is on August 29th and 30th, as well as superintendent conference day on September 1st and 2nd. Our learning focus is on MTS S, curriculum and technology integration, wellness and growth mindset, and school safety. To this end, this may or not be, may or may not be, Mike's last call, with us at Port Jervis. I'm in a loss for words, and it's been a pleasure to work with someone who can see things from a 30,000-foot view, as well as not be afraid to pull up his sleeves and get into the weeds to get things done. So I wish you well in your next adventure, and as you always say, you're going to crush it. Thank you.
Thank you, Natasha. Next, Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. John Ken.
So, project update. General contractors Unimac are performing late demolition work in Area C, which is great because with the seventh graders being there, they would not have been able to touch C, so there's some demolition going on there. And they've had peers and footings in progress in Area A. If you notice, to the left side there, they've already poured. Site construction, the Torrey Brothers, they've finished, they're working on the front loop, they're almost done, they're mostly completed, and they're going to start, oh, their work in the back next week. Our abatement company, United Safety, they're demoing an abatement in the gym and locker areas, returning to Stairwell 2 to finalize all their abatement and demolition, which is under containment, and they're also performing contract abatement in Area B. I just wanted to take the time to thank Mr. Mike Rado. It's been a pleasure working alongside such a great leader. I have this analogy that I use, that we go through life and we take slivers of individuals that we encounter, especially ones we admire, and you're a big sliver in my life. You definitely are important, not only as a leader, but a father, hopefully a friend. So I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
I just want to offer a little explanation because that was very nice what both of you said, but Natasha's.
Right, right.
Yeah, her address this evening and the principals picked up on it, so just to explain for those that may have seen some laughing, there's a word wall in Natasha's office of these sayings that I apparently use too often, and throughout her report this evening, she inserts it. I'm guessing most of that word wall, including my very common mispronunciation of unbelievable. But I was, I was very creative, just to explain why there was a little bit of humor and what that sort of seemed like humorous reporting.
So it's almost like the weather woman that did the Beyonce movie when she came out with her, her new rock of the record. Again.
That's great. Thank you. Next, your consent agenda items. Item A, minutes from August 9th to 2022 regular meeting. Item B, request to declare access and disposal of textbooks in Port Jervis High School. Item C is CSC minutes from 7:27, 7:28, 8:2, 8:4, 8:8, 8:9, 8:11, and 8:16. Have a motion for all those items?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, your personnel employment items. Item A is leave of absence. Item B, resignation support staff, position 542, clerk typus. Item C is resignation support staff, position 590, teacher aide. Item D, resignation vacancy number 2421, coaching, girls' university volleyball coach, girls' modified volleyball coach. Item E, appointment vacancy number 2421, curriculum coordinators, cohort curriculum coordinators, and coaching appointments for the 22-23 school year. Item F is appointment instructional staff, vacancies 2453, position 310, temporary elementary education teacher, leave replacement. Item G, instructional staff, vacancy 42454, position 318, and temporary elementary education teacher, leave replacement. Item H is the appointment, support staff, vacancy 2456, position 3806, probationary teacher aide. Item I, appointment instructional staff, vacancy 2467, position 3808, probationary art teacher. Item J, support staff, vacancy 2479, position 3697, probationary school monitor. Item K, support staff substitute clerk typus. Item L, support staff substitute teacher aide. Item M, appointments, support staff substitute teacher aide. Item N, substitute teachers and nurses for the 2023 school year, 22-23 school year, excuse me. Item O, amendment to board docs, personnel agenda item for March 22nd, 2022. Item P, amendment to board docs, personnel agenda items from June 21st, 2022. Item Q, amendment to board docs, personnel agenda item from July 19th, 2022. Item R, amendment to board docs, personnel agenda item from August 9th, 2022. Have a motion on that?
I would like to impitate a motion with several letters, L and K.
Items L and K, do I have a second on that? Do I have a second on several of those items? No second, okay?
I'll throw a motion.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion on the personnel employment items, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Debbie Lash. Second? Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Flo? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Next, our action items. Item A, adoption of tax warrant for the 2022-23 school year. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Bill Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is the agreement between the Port Jervis City, Port Jervis City School District and Alteris Consulting Group. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Moved by Debbie. Second by Kara. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item C is the agreement between the Port Jervis City School District and Matthew D. Witherow as the impartial hearing officer for the 2022-2023 school year. May I have a motion on that? By Mike Cochran. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Kara. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D is the approval of the district-wide energy safety plan for the 2022-23 school year. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Judy.
I'll second it.
Do I have a second?
Any, any force.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D is the change order number one from Arrow Steel. May I have a motion on that, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Debbie. Second by Flo. All in favor?
None.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I have a motion on that. Let's not be, have an opposition on that.
I'm sorry.
Have an opposition on that.
Oh, you, I missed that.
Sorry. That's the windows, right?
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
I vote no.
Wait, I think, I think I did that wrong. I'm sorry.
You have a second and then the other.
Yes, yes.
You've got to vote now.
I'm sorry. Okay. So let me redo this one. Let me do a redo on this one. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the change order? No motion to approve?
We can motion and approve. I can make a motion and that will vote.
All right, so we have a motion to write the force of discussion.
I'll move it.
Moved by Debbie. Second by Flo. Discussion?
The discussion is, I regrettedly.
Yes.
Because I do prefer the white, however, not $46,000.
I agree. Anybody else?
I agree. I don't want to cost a district extra money to change it to.
After that, not when we know there could potentially be other things down the road.
Right.
So I just, yeah.
Okay. So the motion fails?
No vote. Now I have to take a vote. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay. The vote? All in favor of approving the change order?
No, we're not approving. No, we have to, and we're opposed.
I have.
All opposed.
They're opening. Now, now we're getting.
The whole ball, baby.
All opposed?
Aye.
Yes, all opposed.
All right.
But how about the.
Yeah, yeah. All right, go ahead.
So just to provide some insight on what just took place, a little bit of confusion because of the semantics and the way, whether it's approving it or not approving it, but this change order specifically was for the window trim at the current middle school. So the architects and designers gave us a few options as far as what that window trim color would be. And looking at it, you know, there, obviously, there are going to be different opinions, but the trim remaining white is what was determined to be the optimal choice. That was until they then submitted that there would be a $46,000 increase if the board selected white as that trim. So I just wanted to explain that. It's all right there on board docs, but just that, that'll just provide some level of insight as to why the board voted no on a change order, basically because of the expense, if I could take a guess.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Item F is the employee assistance program agreement for the 2022-23 school year. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Debbie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the lease agreement between the Port Jervis City School District and Quality Bus Service for the use of the bus garage parking lot for the 2022-23 school year. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Bill Harris. Second?
Judy.
Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item A is for the resolution for the authorization, execution, and delivery of a joint intermunicipal agreement with Horntrill for BOSIS. Resolution reads as follows. On the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, motion to adopt the following resolution, whereas the joint agreement sets forth the maximum estimated cost of the project and provides for an allocation and proportionment of said costs among the component school district pursuant to the resident weighted average daily attendance value assigned to each component school district for the 21-22 fiscal year, and sets forth the allocation and proportionment of said costs to each such component school district in accordance with the RWADA value assigned to each component school district, and whereas the district's Board of Education desires to authorize the execution and the delivery of the joint agreement by the district. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education as follows. Section 1, the form and substance of the joint agreement in substantially the form presented to this meeting and attached heretofore as Exhibit A are hereby approved and the execution and delivery of the joint agreement by the district are hereby authorized. President of the Board of Education is hereby authorized on behalf of the district to execute and deliver the agreement. Joint agreement shall be in substantially the form thereof presented to this meeting with such changes, variations, omissions, and insertions as the President of the Board of Education shall approve. The execution thereof by the President should constitute conclusive evidence of such approval. Section B, the resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Moved by Judy. Second?
Second.
Mike Cafeteri. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I is the approval of resolution to enter into an intermunicipal joint agreement with OU Tercosys. Be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the President of the Fort Jervis City School District Board of Education to enter into an intermunicipal joint agreement with Orangeville, Tercosys, and component districts of the Orangeville, Tercosys capital project as presented at this meeting. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Moved by Bill Harris. Second?
No second.
Debbie Lash? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J is a resolution for a request of temporary change in the location plan. May I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Debbie Lash?
I'll second.
Second by... I'm sorry, I missed it.
Kara.
I'm sorry, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item are board member items, board member comments. Any?
Okay, Joe. Maybe they don't want me to talk. I'm going to talk anyway. Thank you. I attended the high school summer school graduation, and they all had achieved a milestone and accomplished what was needed of them to cross the finish line. The Fort Jervis City Police Department is urging parents to teach their children some simple safety tips, tips, I'm sorry, before they head back to school. On Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, hundreds of children will be walking to and from school, and the school bus stops, many for the first time. Everyone who drives has a responsibility to be especially careful during this busy time of year for our young students. Hundreds of children are killed each year in collision with motor vehicle, and thousands are more severely injured. Children tend to be a greater risk during the comeback to school period because they tend to be thinking more about seeing old friends, new teacher, and watching for cars and trucks. In addition, many children are nervous and are taking school for the first time. To help the project, excuse me, to help protect children, parents, and adults are urged to educate their students with the following petition, safety tips provided by the Triple A in New York. Look always before crossing the street. Cross only at corners and crosswalks. Obey police officers, school crossing laws, and traffic signals. Watch for turning cars. Be especially alert in that weather. Do not run or play in the traffic. Motorists, please drive with caution and obey school speed limits. Don't be distracted. Keep your eyes on the road and stay off electronic devices while driving. Do not text or drive. Please yield at all pedestrians and crosswalks. The Fort Jervis City Police Officers will be deployed throughout this next several weeks to strictly enforce vehicle and traffic safety laws pertaining to speeding in school zones. And detracting, driving, yielding to pedestrians and crosswalks, and ensuring that motor vehicles are stopping for school buses when loading and discharging children. Reduced speed limit, school zones are locked on Hamilton, Hamilton Street near the Fort Jervis High School and Kingston Avenue near the entrance to the Ennis School Elementary School complex. And my, are they going, my question is for COVID tests. Will the schools are going to continue to receive these tests to give out to the slides to the family? The families?
Yes, so there is a shipment that's coming. So Tercosys is the central distributor, so they'll receive it from the county, and then they deliver it to each of the school districts. And if we want to get regular deliveries of those, then we can sign up to do so.
Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Bill?
Thank you.
Mike? Hello?
I just want to wish Mr. Wrightell happiness in whatever your future may hold for you. And it was the five years that we've been here, and thank you for everything.
Kara?
I just want to wish, just want to wish everyone a great opening to this school year.
Judy?
I too would like to wish Mike the big future endeavors. I just hope everything goes well for you, and I thank you too for what you've done there in Fort Jervis. I actually would like to wish the children returning back to school the best of luck.
Debbie?
Go.
Okay.
Go away.
Okay. I too would like to wish Mike the best in his future endeavors at Marlborough. And on another note, when I began the journey as a school board member in the late 1990s, I had no idea what I was getting into. However, after multiple terms on and off since then, I can truly say it has been one of my most rewarding experiences and a role that is certainly much larger than I ever anticipated. The most important lesson I believe I learned is that I was one of nine team members elected by our community to ensure that our children were provided the best education our taxpayers could afford. We have been through many changes over the years, some more difficult than others, but I feel we are in a much better place than when I started all those years ago. I have the utmost respect for each and every district employee as well as every board member, and have been fortunate enough to have gained some great friends along the way. As my husband and I... As my husband and I will be closing on our house in Deer Park later this week, I will be tendering my resignation effective at the adjournment of this evening's meeting. I am honored to have been able to serve this community that I grew up and raised my children in, and wish everyone here the best. As I bid a final farewell, I challenge every board member to always put education of our most precious commodities first while trying to maintain fiscal responsibility and always leave personal agendas at the door. They don't belong in a board meeting. Thank you so much, and I wish everyone the best.
I think I would be remiss if I didn't tell you what a wonderful job you've done over all the years that you've devoted to our district. I wish you and your husband a happy retirement, and best good luck to you and everybody.
Thank you so much.
And Mike, best wishes on your new job.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Anything else? All right. I'd like to...
No.
Excuse me?
No.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. I'll do the dates for you. The Fort Jervis City School District Board of Education Meeting, or Education, will hold its next regular board meeting on Tuesday, September 6th at 7:00 PM in the High School Cafeteria. Thursday, August 25th is the summer freshman orientation, 9:00 AM to noon, Fort Jervis High School. Thursday, August 25th is the kindergarten pre-K orientation, 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM at HBE. Tuesday, August 30th is kindergarten orientation, 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at the ASK. Monday, August 29th is Fort Jervis Middle School 7th grade orientation, 5:00, 5:00 PM, Fort Jervis High School. Monday, August 29th is the Fort Jervis Middle School 8th grade orientation, 6:30 PM, Fort Jervis High School. Tuesday, August 30th, Fort Jervis Middle School 7th and 8th grade orientation, daytime option, 1:00 PM, Fort Jervis High School. Tuesday, September 6th, the first day of school, Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM, district-wide Fort Jervis High School cafeteria. Upcoming events, Wednesday, September 7th is the ASK PTA meeting, 7:00 PM, the ASK cafeteria. Tuesday, September 13th, Fort Jervis High School, PTSA meeting, 7:00 PM, the High School Guidance Conference Room. Wednesday, September 14th, ASK open house, grades one through three, 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the ASK. And Thursday, September 15th, is the ASK open house, grades four through six, 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the ASK. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to move into executive session for contract and personnel issues. And by Mr. Bill?
I'll move it.
There will be action?
There will be no action taken.